Stand and uh. City grew up in, you live in one of those?
What are they uh doing?
That's where I live. Okay. And I live in a seventeen.
Middle of the next one.
Just one block south.
Get all the.
Yeah, can you understand my direction? Right over there. There get a lot of that. A lot of people.
What?
I mean, I got that it's on.
Jumps, it jumps.
Which is a lot of people. I've got to say.
Oh, okay. Yeah, I did know.
The time is four thirty P M. Pelican Rapids City Council Meeting of twenty eight May twenty twenty four is called to order. I'd ask those in our council chambers if you have not signed in on the clipboard by the back door, if you would please do so before you leave. And I would ask everyone if they please put their cell phones on vibrate. Roll call members, Daniel.
Councilmember Steve Strand.
Here.
Councilmember Kevin Ballard.
Here.
Councilmember Kurt Markcraft.
Here.
Councilmember Steve Foster.
Here.
And Mayor Brent Frazier.
Here, want to welcome each and every one of you here this evening. City council chambers, also those joining us by Zoom. Remember, our city council meetings are shown on the Pelican Rapids YouTube channel and also on Channel fourteen on Wednesday evening. Uh, just a few announcements for the next couple of weeks. Uh, Thursday, May thirty is the Pinewood Estates Community Open House at the Public Library from two thirty to five P M. Also on Thursday, ten to eleven A M is conversations with the mayor at Pelican Rapids Library. And our next city council meeting is slated for Tuesday, June eleventh at four thirty P M here at the city council chambers. Any other announcements? Any other announcements? Hearing none, if we all please stand for the pledge of allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you. Item number two is citizens' comments. Anyone here for citizens' comments? If you are not on the agenda? Anyone here for citizens' comments? Okay, seeing none. Move on to item number three. Additions, deletions to the agenda. I have one addition. Under eleven, another bullet point is a pay request from Hammers Construction. Under eleven, another bullet point, pay request from Hammers Construction. Any other additions or deletions?
Move the agenda with the addition.
A second.
Motion second, discussion. 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 Hearing none, all in favor, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
All is the same, motion carried. Item number four, excuse me, approval of consent agenda, which I'll read. Four A is approval of council minutes from May fourteenth, twenty twenty four. Four B is approval accounts payable listings. Four C one is staff report, liquor store report in your packet. Four C two, utility report from April twenty twenty four, which is in the packet. Four D is on sale intoxicating liquor license and Sunday on sale to Aurora Escobar's proprietor for, to Carilla Escobar. Item four E is park board minutes from April fifteenth, twenty twenty four, which is in the packet. And four F is certified unpaid utility bills to property taxes. Partial seven, six, zero, 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 nine, nine, zero, four, two, five, zero, zero, one, the amount of three hundred and eighty-two dollars and twenty-eight cents. Is there a motion to approve?
So moved.
Second?
Second.
Motion second. Discussion. 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 Hearing none, all in favor, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
All is the same, motion carried. Item number five. We have a Crystal Jamerson here from Legal Services of Northwest Minnesota. And I found out this is a firm that's been in operation for quite some time, but it's new to most of us. So, Crystal, if you want to introduce who's with you and your program, thank you.
Definitely. Hi, and good afternoon. My name is Crystal Jamerson. Um, I am the community engagement and outreach coordinator for Legal Services of Northwest Minnesota. Um, we serve twenty-two counties, um, including Pelican Rapids, and we provide free civil legal assistance for individuals in the community, low-income individuals. As I go around to the different communities that we serve, I kind of check to see what the needs are, where the issues are, and how we can help. And so what I did realize is that not a lot of the organizations that were in Pelican Rapids knew about us, knew how we were able to serve. So they suggested that we definitely come to the, the city meeting to kind of explain our, um, our services so that you guys were also aware of the city and how we can help your community members. So today I have our executive director. Her name is Ann Hoffman, and she'll be able to give you just a brief introduction about, um, who we are.
Yeah. Thank you, good evening. Thanks for having me here. Just signal at you Lance when I want to move forward. Okay. I feel bad that my back is to you guys, sorry. So I'll just try to stand here. Um, good evening and thank you. And thanks to Crystal for setting this up for us today. I will be brief. I do love the work that I do, so I will try and, um, control my enthusiasm a little bit. Um, go ahead. My name is Ann. As Crystal said, I've worked at Legal Services of Northwest Minnesota for twenty years. We are a nonprofit organization. And we, um, as noted, serve twenty-two counties in Northwest Minnesota, including Ottertail County, obviously. But we serve a huge, um, piece of real estate, basically. We have three staffed offices in Morehead, Alexandria, and in Bemidji. And we've had those offices for between twenty and thirty years each. The organization's been around since nineteen seventy-seven, serving the community. Just keep, I'll just keep it going. We are a law office, so we have lawyers, we have support staff, and all of those things. And what we do is we provide free services to low-income individuals and families and to seniors, um, with a little bit of different income eligibility for seniors, but for low-income families and individuals who have noncriminal legal needs. And we don't do everything that lawyers do that are noncriminal, but the criminal justice system is in two parts. So we have a law enforcement here, he's on the criminal side. If you get arrested, don't call us. That's call, call a private attorney, or you could talk to a public defender. If you can't afford a lawyer, you are entitled to an attorney in the criminal justice system. On the civil side, you're not entitled to a lawyer. So we are a small nonprofit, um, that attempts to fill that gap for when people have legal issues that are impacting their safety, stability, um, and things along that line. I'll talk about that in just a minute here. I also talk really, really fast, so I hope you're all keeping up with me. Court reporters can't stand it. Um, about three hundred and fifty words plus per minute. Just so if you're keeping up, good for you. Um, so the type of cases that we do are into three main buckets. I always put the cases into three main buckets. The first bucket is family law. Most people think, okay, courts and lawyers and things related to family law, they think to call us. So most of our cases that come in are family law. We really focus our services on, um, people who are facing safety issues, stability issues, in particular victims of domestic violence, or seniors who are facing exploitation or abuse. Um, we also do help with custody, divorce, parenting time, child support, third-party custody, things like that. Um, but again, the variety, the majority of our services in the family law area are related to victims of domestic violence. We work really closely with our domestic violence advocates. Um, early this afternoon, Crystal and I were talking to Someplace Safe Advocates. So we partner really closely with your local community organizations because, as noted, we serve a huge service area and we really need them, um, to be on board with us and for us to work together with them. Um, the second big bucket of cases we do is housing. Um, housing stability is so important to families and to anyone. So being in court when someone is facing an eviction, if we can stop the eviction and get their rent paid, great. If we can't stop the eviction, can we at least work out a move-out agreement, working with the landlords to give them more time to move? The difference between having to move up and move your family in a twenty-four hour or three-day period versus having three weeks and maybe not having an eviction on your record is huge. So we focus a lot of our resources on eviction court. And since the pandemic and courts have gone virtual, we have, um, regional housing courts, and so we are really lucky to be able to have those regional virtual housing courts so we can appear in every housing court appearance. Um, we also deal a little bit with foreclosures if somebody's dealing with that, repairs, utility shut-offs, and illegal discrimination. Um, the repair issues, we're not going to go into court if somebody has a leaky faucet, or maybe their handle falls off in the sink in their kitchen. Mine does that all the time. I really need a handyman. We're not going into court on those. We're going to go into court if somebody has no hot water, no heat, um, if a landlord has removed the front door in an illegal eviction action. Um, so that's the second big bucket of cases we do. The third bucket of cases I call economic stability. And as you will hear me talk about, all of these cases relate to family stability issues. So, um, unemployment, compensation, access to healthcare, education issues, employment, unemployment, um, getting people on disability if they qualify for disabilities through the social security system, and those are the other three buckets. So, next slide, please. And the way we provide services are, um, on sort of a spectrum. So representation is what you sort of see on TV, um, though I always say it's not nearly as interesting, and people aren't nearly as good-looking as on TV, and it doesn't move as quickly as people want. But where lawyers go into court with you and represent you, and that's, um, our highest level of service. A lot of times, we don't have the resources to do that, but we will give you advice. Where do you stand legally? What are your rights and what are your responsibilities? Um, and then we will do limited representation. Sometimes we'll help you write a letter, or we will maybe make a phone call to an employer or somebody to try and, uh, work through a system. A lot of times, we give people the forms that they need to fill out themselves, um, in order to go into court and represent themselves if they're unrepresented. We do have a clinic down in Fergus Falls every Wednesday where people get help with those forms. We also have a virtual option for that. Um, and then finally, we do education and self-help resources, helping people, empowering people to help themselves when they are facing these, um, barriers to critical legal needs. We'll just keep, keep moving. I'm going really fast. I also do this presentation in an hour-long format. You'll all be glad to know I'm not doing that. We do, as I noted, we do, based on our funding, we serve low-income families. Our income limits are two hundred percent of federal poverty, and also people with, um, low assets. So if somebody had fifty thousand dollars sitting in their bank account, we are not going to provide services. We really have to focus on those that can't afford a lawyer and that are facing, um, barriers to critical legal needs such as safety, security, stability, and income maintenance. Next slide. If you do know folks that, um, need to apply, or if there's other community, um, groups that we could talk to, happy to talk to them. We take applications at that phone number. We have, um, a website, thanks to Crystal, does an amazing job at that, and in person at our three locations. Because we serve twenty-two counties, the vast majority of applications we take are through the phone. Right? People are, you don't need to drive to, um, Alexandria or to Morehead to apply. We can take applications online, and we can also via the phone. Other ways that we get out in the community are to, um, we have sort of three, you can move on to the next one, three different, I keep saying buckets, three different ways we get out of the community. Um, the first I want to talk about is our legal kiosks. Legal kiosks are a part of a statewide network that allow people access to courts. As I mentioned earlier, courts are often virtual, and not everybody has good internet in a safe, secure place. There are two locations here in, um, Pelican Rapids that have legal kiosks. One is at the Public Library, and one is at the Community and Life Services. So they offer the access to the community to use this legal kiosk to, um, get legal information, to apply for legal services, or to attend any sort of Zoom meeting. They are basically a computer, but they are, um, structured so that you're not, you don't just walk up to a computer and not know what to do. It's like click here to go to Zoom. So if somebody has a court hearing, if somebody has an appointment, if somebody does telehealth and needs to meet with a counselor or a doctor, we have that Zoom access. And so that's something that, through the state of Minnesota, we have put up these network of legal kiosks across the state. There are two hundred and fifty of them statewide, again, two of them here in Pelican Rapids. It is a way that we, uh, use technology to extend our reach, to reach people and provide services. Um, the next thing we have is our Justice Bus, um, which is a mobile legal aid clinic. So if, again, we don't have a physical office here, um, in Pelican, but anywhere where there is an event, or if we are invited and we show up and we can do a mobile legal aid clinic, we can help people fill out forms, we can do powers of attorney and healthcare directives, we can give legal advice, or just be out to, um, do further outreach and tell people more about the services that we do, like I'm doing here, really fast here tonight. And then the last, um, way we serve people is through the self-help clinics. As I mentioned earlier, when we hand people those documents and they have to do it themselves, they're pretty hard to do because they're written for people who are not represented, but they're written by a bunch of lawyers and judges. And so they're not ideal. Um, so we have different clinics in all of those different areas, plus virtual clinics that people can go to to get help with forms. So that's another way we, um, try and serve the community. And I will breathe now. So, I know you guys have a long meeting. Are there any questions right now? I mean, all of our contact information is on here too, so I know if there's anything comes up. But I really appreciate the opportunity to come. There's questions from the crowd. Oh, Crystal's got a question. To just be able to tell you guys more about what we do. We do want to serve Ottertail County and Pelican as best we can. Uh, as you saw on an earlier slide, I have less than thirty people serving twenty-two counties, so we're spread pretty thin. Uh, but it's really important that the clients and the families that need our services know that we exist. So, anything that, that we can do to, that you guys can give us ideas, how to reach your community, or, um, spread the word, we appreciate it.
Crystal, they're giving some information to leave here at City Hall, so we have that now.
Yes.
Okay.
Yeah. All of that information is there and on our website, so feel free to go onto the website, and you'll be able to contact me directly if you have some questions. I can help you all with too.
Any questions?
How do you get paid?
Um, a variety of sources, like many nonprofits. The fifty percent or so of our funding is, uh, state legislative dollars, where one part of the, I call it the, um, just like they, they fund the public defenders, they fund the courts, and then they fund civil legal aid. Um, we also get some federal dollars. Some of that is through the Legal Services Corporation. That's about fifteen percent of our funding. Um, we also do special projects and apply through foundations and, um, you know, private giving and all of the ways. I think we have about fourteen, um, different funding sources, including United Ways. Um, so like many nonprofits, we cobble together a whole bunch of funding sources. That diversity of funding helps us stay stable. Yeah, happy to provide more information about that.
Any other questions?
Do you have handouts?
Um, Crystal had a few things she left behind, so.
I did leave some with the mayor, otherwise.
Yeah, they're on Danielle's desk right now. Danielle has them.
All right, thanks.
But we do have them. Okay, thank you, ladies.
Thank you.
Appreciate you.
Yeah, thank you.
Item number six, Park Region Co-op Backroad Access Improvements and Costs. We have Mr. Everett Ballard here from Park Region Board to speak to us. And Tom Murray.
Okay. Yeah. Yeah, I guess basically the, the reason we're here, you know, with the construction and stuff going on, there are four businesses that are basically using this west access point into our, into our area. And part of the discrepancy or discussion or whatever is Park Region owns very little of that land, and actually, I believe, it's the city owns part of it. I think the city, if, I don't know if you had a, a map for that, uh, I think the city owns from the, from the tar up to the, just about halfway up the building, according to the map we have. And then Barlow's own a good chunk of it, and then Park Region owns the rest. Currently, we've, we've spent about forty-five hundred dollars of our, of Park Region's own money just maintaining that road, whether it was crushed asphalt, grading, and that doesn't include the time that our employees have spent with their skid steer and stuff down there.
You spent that much thus far?
Thus far, we've spent forty-five hundred. I, we have the bills here from Aggies. So I guess we're kind of looking, you know, is there a way that we can get some financial help for this, or, because very, very little of the property is owned by Park Region, but yet we're, we're the ones maintaining that to have access to those four businesses. And it's, it's an on, it'll be an ongoing thing until at least, uh.
Till the south end is completed.
When they get that south end done. So if you look, well, you can kind of see that map there, it's kind of, uh.
It says it's road right of way, but I, I don't know. We were trying to find, I know there's an easement through there. We've never maintained this before, ever, so I don't know. We have to look into that more, who's actually responsible for it, because if we are responsible for this road right of way, then yeah, we should be.
For that, for that first part.
Right.
Yeah, and then the rest, then the next major part of it there is kind of, uh, is, belongs to the Barlow's, but, and that's where, you know, so part of that is where we've been putting a lot of that crushed asphalt, because it just doesn't, and even right now, once that gets down, it's hard to get that graded. But like we say, yeah, we're, we're pushing forty-five hundred already, just, and we're only a month into this project. It's.
Brian, do you have any observations on this?
I did not. I did not even know, I thought that was private. All I was aware of was the easement that we had on the ten feet, on the south side of the eye clinic, and that is exactly where our storm drain goes down there, and then we own a ten-foot strip, um, actually where the storm drain drains under the road, right there. But I managed to look through the easement file, and I looked through it also quick, but I couldn't find where that easement.
Test.
Found one for a different piece of property, but not that one. So I think we'll have to figure that out before.
Okay. Well, since it's part of the detour that the project is causing, doesn't, couldn't that roll into the project? For Landwear to, because they're supposed to maintain the detour, correct?
Right, but they don't, that's not a detour. That's business access, and they don't.
That's your find, there's find-your-path signs are right at the edge of the.
Right.
Road, basically, right there, pointing to those four businesses, Arvick and Brown眼 Susan's and the Eye Clinic and us.
They're struggling now to the south, where you used to cut across, go behind the fire hall. They don't consider that part of the detour any longer either, so they won't maintain that.
It's getting pretty bad, too.
So I mean, basically, we're, what we're doing is we're maintaining this so we can get people to those, those four businesses, but we basically have been footing the bill.
Right. So there's possibly more information out there we don't know about?
More information, I don't think, because what, we can't spend private, public money on private land if it's not ours, so. We had that scenario before. So we're going to have to look into that a little more with our cell phone, G I S. And if it turns out it is, we can maintain the wider part down there, but you see, it gets pretty narrow as you go up, and then it's off, not even how it stayed.
And the hardest, the, the worst part is actually from the, the tar right there, and then when you get into that wide part there, it.
Yeah.
It's pretty potholed up, and we were just down there Friday trying to straighten it out again. And once that crushed asphalt gets down in there, it does, it doesn't grade up very easily.
Every time it rains, it just comes right back, so.
Yeah.
It's a constant issue this year with all the rain we've had.
So at this point, gentlemen, could we, uh, look into this a little more in detail with the county and such, and try to see if there's any missing information, then we could put it on the agenda?
Right, and if there's any way that, if there's any funding out there that we can tap into ourselves for this, but, I mean, like, right now, I said, it's Park Region's been paying at a hundred percent.
Yeah.
Have you talked to any of the businesses that are also benefiting from it or not?
Talked to Brown眼 Susan's a little bit, and they just, basically, they said, yeah, they, you know, they're, they're using it, and the Eye Clinic too has been using it. And he basically, I think he told Todd that he hadn't, he'd never seen a bill, so he doesn't, you know.
We haven't approached anybody yet, and.
And.
Wanted to start here and see what, uh, become of this first.
Jordan Grossman's with us here this evening. She's our Economic Development Director, and I don't mean to put her on the spot, but do you know of any, uh, programs available that could help Park Region on this project?
How many businesses are using it? Four of you?
Four, basically, right now.
Would benefit from it, yes.
You could get a.
Or five, basically, Callan Burger King.
So we have a small mini grant available right now for businesses impacted by road construction. I can get you an application, and if each business highlighted that as where you'd like to put the money, I think that that could definitely get a few thousand dollars.
Is that the one, is that five hundred dollar max, whatever?
Yeah. Yeah, but if you don't fill it out, then.
Right.
Then it, you know, the, the deadline's coming up, so if you need another copy of that, I can send one your way.
Yeah, that would, would be, get all five of the businesses to fill it out.
What is the deadline?
Fill it out once and hand it out to each one, put their name on it.
When was the deadline, I'm sorry?
I don't want to say the date out loud and be quoted wrong. Um, it's in the beginning to middle of June.
I was thinking June fifteenth, but I could be wrong.
Yep, I think so, but.
Twenty-minute thing.
Yeah, it's very simple. You don't need a lot, you know, not a big grant application. It's local dollars from our private economic development group in town, and they're really looking at advertising what they do for the community, so they'd like to help.
Great.
Customer strength.
Is it okay to drive behind the fire hall?
You had to put a speed bump back there.
Yeah.
It's not really good.
It's not a designated access point.
I thought of the same thing, Steve, so I don't, I don't know if that's, uh.
They are driving back there, but they're coming so fast that you have to, you had to make a little speed bump to try to slow down.
But it works, so. I mean, they have, they have their sign designating where the businesses are, are off of this gravel road.
So you can work with Jordan on that possible grant, and then we'll, we'll see if there's any more information, then we can put you on the agenda in two weeks then?
Yep.
That work?
Okay. Yep.
Okay, thanks, gentlemen.
Thank you.
Thank you. Item number seven, designated fire hydrant painting. We have Andy and also Mary Melroy, who are local residents here. And Andy's going to explain the project.
All right, so, uh, thank you, everyone, for allowing me this chance to speak. So I am with the Walmart Academy out of Dilworth, Minnesota, and one year ago, you would not have caught me talking about this. Uh, A, public speaking, even though I stand in front of classes all day, uh, but B, uh, the, the subject of this is about human trafficking, which is not a very comfortable topic for a lot of people to talk about, specifically child trafficking. So a year ago, I really wouldn't have talked about this, but, um, the more I thought about it as a parent and as just a, a human, I realized that, uh, this is a, it's an ongoing, uh, problem worldwide, and it affects every community. Now, last summer, we started painting fire hydrants in Dilworth. We got with the city and painted a dozen, yes, we did a dozen fire hydrants over the course of the summer. And the goal is just to talk, or, I mean, excuse me, the goal is to raise awareness on the trafficking issue. It's getting people talking. And at first, uh, the community was a little confused. Uh, they actually called the cops on us the first time, because you had a group of, uh, people standing out there spray painting a fire hydrant. So the police showed up, but then we explained ourselves. And, uh, the community backed us. We had people kind of following us around every weekend, wondering where we were going to go next, what we were painting. Uh, and you can see from the pictures, now these, most of these pictures unfortunately are not what we are doing, or what we did. These are ideas that I brought up. But I believe that is one that we did. We did a Dalmatian, I know that. Uh, the goal is to paint the hydrants in these colorful, uh, well, colors, get the children's characters out there. We've got Dalmatians, we've done, you know, Cookie Monster, all these different things, and just make it visible, make it bright, and get people's attention. Yeah, Princess Leia, I just found that one, I like that. Uh, and again, when we, when we were doing this last summer, the community of Dilworth was very supportive of us, uh, following us around. Most of what we did was on kind of like park property outside of businesses. We did one outside of a home, and that, we only did the one, and we were a little concerned because we had never done that before, and the response was immediate. People were coming to us, like, can you come to my house and do it? We want this character at our house. And we're like, uh, we can't decide that, we are granted permission by the city. And, uh, I believe, uh, we were given, was it six?
Yeah, we looked at six.[1743.41]
Six, here.
Those have been identified. Brian identified those already.
All right, and we are thankful for that, for that opportunity. We're going to be here in a couple of weeks to do that. So pretty much, I'm here to just kind of talk about what we're going to be doing, why we're out there spray painting your fire hydrants. Are there any questions for me on this?
And like you mentioned, the topic is one, you know, most people don't want to talk about human trafficking, child trafficking, but it's, it's in our community as well.
It is.
It's not just the big cities. It's all over.
Yes, that is very true. It's not a, it's not something that you can say, yeah, it doesn't affect me. You may not realize it, but it is everywhere. And yes, it is, it is an uncomfortable topic, but we want to raise awareness through these kind of fun designs, and, you know, think about the children.
So if a child sees the painting, how is that helping them?
The idea isn't to say, hey, children, look at the fire hydrant. It's to get the adults talking about the subject of human trafficking, what we're doing. As we go out and we're doing this, if there's businesses around, we have flyers that explain what we're doing, that we're going to give to the business if they care to hang it up in their window. Unfortunately, I was going to bring a sample of the flyer. I left it at work in my rush to get here. But we're letting the area know what it is about, so that people will start conversing.
What does the fire chief say about?
Yeah, all our fire hydrants are, all of them are red, and they all have, they aren't painted according to pressure.
No.
They're all the same.
All the same, yeah.
So there wouldn't be any confusion there.
None. And all the ones, the six that we've looked at are all kind of around the school.
Yeah. Anyone have any objections to the program?
I really don't get how painting these fire hydrants different colors raises awareness.
Again, the idea is to grab people's attention. We're used to seeing yellow fire hydrants and red fire hydrants. That's normal. You drive by that, you don't think twice. You see Clifford the Big Red Dog? Eh, maybe. You see something like a gumball machine? That's going to grab your attention. And the idea, okay, why is that painted like that? You get people talking. Well, it's to raise awareness. Human trafficking, it's not something that's going to say not affect your town because you're in a small bubble. It can be anywhere and everywhere. The more we talk about it, the more we bring awareness to it, the more people are going to be on the lookout for it, especially when it comes to the children.
So the purpose is primarily a conversation starter?
Exactly.
Well, I think they should be red, but I wouldn't find it, so.
Why only six?
Just in that one area around, kind of around the school where people would see it more. They can always, they paint it back to red in a few years, you know. It's not like they can't be replaced, so it's not, if it, one person talks about it, it's more than what we're here now, I guess, if I see it.
Yeah, it'd be good to have a mo.
Motion, we go forward with the painting of the fire hydrants. Our second.
Our second.
Motion second. Discussion. Discussion.
Just the six around the school, or what is it?
Yeah, yeah, right. Any more discussion? Hearing none, all in favor, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Poes the same. Motion carried. Thank you, Andy. Thank you, Mary.
Thank you for your time. Appreciate it.
Let us jump down to item number 14. I know we have several people in the audience here this evening. Here for that topic. Item number 14 is downtown trees and conduit. Lance, do you want to do an introduction into this topic?
Sure, it's, we've talked about it several times here. Basically, we need to figure out what we want for trees downtown. The visual quality manual, we've looked at that. I mean, I don't know if you have any questions on where the trees are going, or, I did go through and contact a lot of businesses downtown, business owners, businesses, landowners. And what I found, a majority are for trees downtown. I had 13 yes, five were against, and then there was three that were kind of on the fence, were no opinion.
Give me that number again, please.
So 13 were yes, they were for it, five were against, and then three were, had, kind of right on the, on the fence. They weren't necessarily for or against, they just really didn't have an opinion.
Do you have the map of the locations?
So this is right between the roundabouts. So there'd been 11 right in between the roundabouts. On that first block to the north of the north roundabout, there's seven more. And then this is, the south roundabout is right here, so these two got removed because there was not room, and then there's 2, 4, 6, 7, from the fire hall to that south roundabout. Those are all the ones that are going to be in, would be in grates. So like I said, the majority that I've found, they're for it. There are, the one big concern that most people brought up was blockage of signage. That's the one concern, or the main concern.
How tall are these trees?
So here are the, in that visual quality manual, here are the three trees that would possibly, that were chosen, that could go downtown in those grates. They're the smaller So the spring snow crab apple that has a height of 10 to 15 feet, and then a 10 to 15-foot wide canopy, did say that it can be easily shaped and kept to the desired size. So I think the key to any of these, if they do go downtown, is to keep them maintained. If you keep them trimmed and things, they're not going to get out of control and be such a huge canopy to block the signage. That's, that's the big concern. The river birch, that's another 10 to 15-foot tall, eight to 10-foot spread. So, like I said, the key would be to keep them maintained. If they're not, I mean, if there's weeds growing out of the grates, and if they're getting out of control, then it's not, not going to be a benefit to downtown, so. Any other questions?
I know in the audience this evening, there's business owners and several people from the beautification committee. The beautification committee was formed as part of the 24, 20, 25 Complete Streets Project, representing the city's interests in a downtown business district, and is, who was the chair of the beautification committee? I'm not sure. Would someone like to speak for the beautification committee?
I don't think there was a chair. I think the chair was actually.
We've got to address the microphone, though.
Mindot was the chair.
Someone want to speak from the beautification committee?
Justin, do you remember anything?
Okay, I'll speak.
Thank you.
I'll bite the bullet on this one and talk about it.
Who are you?
Well, my name's Justin Fury. I served on the beautification committee, and basically the main goal of the beautification committee is to make Pelican Rapids beautiful, to attract tourism, but also for residents as well. And so we came to consensus that we wanted trees. We also talked about having electric conduits to the trees, so we can decorate them with lights and whatnot during Christmas, because decorating lights during the Christmas season really brings out the tourism, and, you know, people want to stay longer and spend time in Pelican Rapids with that. So we talked about having trees, and the stuff that Lance has is what we talked about and had a consensus with. And so the whole thing is that trees is kind of a magnet. So obviously, our buildings are a magnet, but also trees. For whatever reason, psychologically, people like trees, so, yeah. Is there any, any questions or anything like that?
Could you tell us a little bit about the process that you went through to come to that choice or that decision?
Yeah, well, I'll tell you, like I've told you before in another meeting, a majority of our time was talking about trees, so we're basically tree experts by now. But we talked about what, you know, which trees go wide, which trees go long, and I took a lot of notes. I don't have them with me, but, you know, all the different tree types, and, I mean, Mindot brought a, what was the title of that person?
Arborist, perhaps?
Landscape.
Landscape architect, which I didn't know that existed, but, so she had all the information, had all the knowledge, and so we were just saying, hey, you know, we don't want, we want to make sure that the trees don't go too deep for the utilities, and she said, yep, us, too. Obviously, Mindot doesn't want our utilities to get wrecked as well, so she had a bunch of educated suggestions of, these are the trees that have low roots, you know, you don't want to go too wide, because the buildings, you don't want to go super high, but you still want them, want higher trees, so people aren't scratching their head on the trees, walking by. So, like I said, a lot of our discussion was about trees. And so we talked about it, and then at some point, you know, we said, is that a consensus? Is that what everybody agrees to? And everybody said, yeah.
Judy has something to say. I do want to talk after all. Hi, Judith Fingerbretson, I was also on the beautification committee, representing the park board, and of course, we are all about trees. So what he was saying about the roots is we didn't pick trees that have root systems that branch out, that are going to ruin the sidewalks or break up the sidewalks in front of businesses. We had, we picked trees where the roots go down. We picked trees that are, they're not sensitive to the salt and the sand, so that they won't get ruined with the crap that gets blown up on the sidewalks when the streets are plowed. We picked trees with small crowns, so that we would not block signage. We picked trees that did not have little berries that fell onto the sidewalk, so you wouldn't get messes dragged into the stores. We put a lot of thought and effort into picking the trees with the guidance from Mindot's landscape, landscape architect. And the trees that go toward, once you get out of the downtown area and you're in front of the school, or you're up by West Central Turkeys, there's where we picked larger trees with big crowns. We tried to pick trees that, things like maples and other trees that would beautify our area. The trees not only are for beautification, they help cut down on the noise from all of the semis that are constantly going through town. They cut down on the pollution. They will give shade to the people that are walking on the street or sitting on the benches, and they will beautify our community. We don't want to go downtown and just see a bunch of cement and semis. We want to have a pretty town, and that's why there was a beautification committee formed, and we came to a number of meetings and put in a lot of time and effort, went through many of these types of presentations, and I just think it's all about making Pelican Rapids beautiful, so that people want to be here. And so now we have Pelican, or the, the Peteyville at Christmas time. And what I've heard is the plans are that they want to extend that and go down into the other parks, Veterans Park and that type of thing. Also, the park board, every year, puts forth an application for grant money from Oktoberfest for beautification of our town. And not this year, obviously, because there would be no reason, but our talking is that in a year or two, we want to put for lighting for the trees and stuff that are going to hopefully be downtown. And that is all I have to say. Thank you.
Thank you.
So that diagram, we saw the trees, that was your final diagram to bring forward.
Can you go back to that?
Yeah, so we talked about the number of trees. Obviously, we didn't want to overcrowd, but we didn't want to undercrowd as well. The Mindot architect, architecture, landscape architecture, found out the different, the best places to go, and so that's what they came up with.
Any questions for the beautification?
How was the committee formed? I don't remember anything about it.
So the committee formed because you guys said, hey, we should have a committee for a beautification, and you probably voted for it, so.
I would have, but it was all volunteer, yeah.
Yeah, it was all volunteer. So it went out and, and Salga reached out to different people as well.
It was a party way down Salga. It was in the city meeting minutes.
Anyone else from the beautification committee or businesses? Glad to hear you.
All right, good evening. Matt Strand. My wife lives, I own Ace Hardware, and we're the biggest property owners in the downtown section of Pelican Rapids. So contrary to what Lance is reporting, a whole of the majority of the businesses do not want trees, and majority, between, from the bridge to the north roundabout, because the south of the bridge was already voted on, correct?
Yeah.
So I just focused on the bridge to the north side of the roundabout, because that's where my properties are. What other property owners want to go for, I don't have a dog in the fight. Can we go to the image here? Got it? So starting on the west side of the street, Roger Shaleski, 48 North, does not want trees. Rehab, next one down, 46 North, kind of indifferent. Well, Steve, did you talk to him?
Yeah, they didn't want their new canopy being blocked and the signage.
Next one, 44 North Broadway, Envy, Amanda Tweetin, does not want a tree in front of her business. Next lot, I own, that's our parking lot, I do not want trees in front of my business. Next two parcels are the main hardware store building with a tree. We do not want a tree in front of our business. Next one is our paint building, no tree in front of it, and we don't want a tree in front of it. After that is Chavez, no tree in front of it. He does not want trees blocking his sign. Spoke to him yesterday, two days ago, yesterday. Next one, what is that, 28 North. I also own that building. I do not want a tree in front of that building. And I did not talk to Backstroms or the Beauty Cellar. Going the other side of the street, starting on the north side, Kathleen Hoover. She owns 57 North and the lots on 51 through 53. Kathleen does not want trees on her property, and she has one. Next one, lot is owned by Nelsons. Spoke to her today. She does not want trees on her property. Next one, Mike Carlson, he's kind of indifferent. Spoke to Big John, next one down, Big John's Pizza. He does not want anything blocking his building, but he's indifferent on trees. And I have not spoke to anyone else on the way down. So for the privately owned footage from the bridge north, the majority does not want trees. The only one I know for sure that does want trees is Andrew, not to speak for you, but.
Why don't you want trees? Why don't you want?
The trees are going to block our signage. We have thousands and thousands of dollars of signage on our downtown buildings, so our customers can find them, find their way to our building. Maintenance, they're going to drop leaves, they're going to drop branches, they're going to heave sidewalks. We have to move snow around them. We use equipment to move snow, which is an added challenge to move snow around them. If you add electrical boxes, that's another thing, just to get sheared off by the snowplow. So I understand the committee put a lot of work into this, and that Don appointed them to do it, but the downtown business owners are the ones that are going to bear the brunt of this work. We need to maintain them. We need to deal with them. They're going to diminish our business. Majority, at least in the downtown section, that hasn't been voted on, do not want them. You know, cleanup, sidewalk damage, block signage, cost of maintenance and replacement, those GFI receptacles, those go bad. It's an electrician every single time. Going down the list, this is our property, this is our livelihoods, you know, and trees, people want trees and don't get them, they're disappointed. People don't want them and do get them, they're disappointed, and they have to maintain them, deal with them, and deal with the consequences of them, so.
So those numbers, they don't agree with what Lance said?
Well, I'm not saying I've reached out to every single person. Those are the numbers, some of the ones that he, he mentioned, they had a little bit different answers to my question. I was going down with a general question of, do you want trees downtown or not? Not, do you want one in front of your place or not?
So for the eight privately owned trees, talking between the roundabouts, north of the bridge, of the eight, two are on mine. I don't want them. One is on Kathleen's. One is on Kathleen's, she doesn't want it. One is on Envy, she doesn't want it, for sure. Haven't talked to Hovland's. Mike and Big John are indifferent, but John didn't want one blocking. Those are the eight trees that are on private property. There's one else in front of Historic City Hall, which the city's responsible for, and it's the city's goal.
What, what's the little one between, we talked about where the entrance would be for the new, for the parking lot, or for the access to the parking below? That little square that's, nope, north. That one.
That one's in front of Amanda Tweetin's.
Is that a, is that a tree? Or what is that? Because that's smaller than the others.
It is a tree.
And is that going to be in the way for turning into that?
We own to the center of the road.
Lot and that access to the parking lot below?
Yeah, easement's on it. We own the property.
That one should not be-
Will that be in the way for turning into that access to the, to the lower city lot?
Through maps? Parking lot, I mean?
Yeah, the, well, that alley drive access road. Will that be in the way?
Depends how big it is. I would assume it would be for visual.
It would be visual anyway, a problem turning out into the one-way.
So how much leeway is there to move these around? I don't know.
Well, each one can be shifted a few feet, the way it sounds. It's not like we can pick and choose, okay, we want to move this one in front of this building rather than right here, that you can't, we won't be able to do that. It can be shifted a few feet here and there, otherwise, that's about it, because there's streetlights, signs, or, you know, lights, signs, utilities, all that stuff that had first precedence over that.
Yeah, Xena Stussy. I just, I have to go, but I just wanted to say, it seems like the cart got before the horse or something here, because we were recruited to this big committee to make all these decisions, spent all this time. It seems like probably there was some city council or business surveying that would have, it would have been beneficial to do before. We were operating under the assumption this was a go. We had no idea there was any objection to it. There's some concern, what is private property and what belongs to the city? Who, so who really does get to make the decision? So I, you know, what, I just wanted to put my two cents' worth in and say, we were of great intent, we spent a lot of time. If the trees were there before the construction, it seems like the trees should be able to be there after the construction, it's part of the city. So we just, uh, weren't given all the information, and there was no one representing the city or other people who might be opposed, and why. We didn't consider any of those issues. Signage, we didn't. Right, so I'm just saying, I think we got ourselves in a little conundrum here, and so we'll have to figure out-
Multiple emails out for people to join that committee, so they can do their diligence.
Okay, we, I-
Well, not the committee, no, the, the city, the city didn't. The city that requested-
The microphone, one person at a time.
Uh, the city that requested us to do this maybe had to do more due diligence before they appointed us. I, I don't know all the ins and outs, but thank you very much for your time, and thank you for your considerations.
I don't doubt the intent of the committee.
No.
I, I, but I agree with her statement that there was some, you know, there was a horse that wasn't mentioned. Because we were supposed to have talked about this a long time ago. Because I remember Tom Pace at the meeting saying, you guys will have the opportunity to discuss this and go through and decide if you want trees. And now we turn around and we're, well, here's where your trees are going to go, and here's what you're going to get, and we haven't, we didn't talk to our business owners.
Yeah, the committee's work did not include, uh, talking to the business owners, correct? They just, did you scout out business owners? Or just 10 locations downtown?
Judith Fingerbretson, again, um, the business owner certainly had the opportunity to be on the committee. Um, I believe it was kind of an open thing, we need members for this committee, and, um, so I don't know where they were when the committees were meeting, but one of the things we did discuss was not, or it was brought up, is maybe not as many trees as Mindot was proposing. So I don't know, I'm, I'm not one that likes to not be able to make compromise, so maybe there could be a compromise on cutting down the number of trees. You can't have, oh, these people want trees, so we're going to have two trees over here, but these people who are here this period of time, but may not be here 50 years from now, don't want trees. I think it has to be uniform, and it doesn't have to be that many trees.
Judy, did you guys, or did you guys have the input on these placements, or was that something that was given to you guys through Mindot?
No, Mindot-
Mindot kind of gave-
The way I remember it, and I think Mindot kind of chose where they thought the trees should be. The landscape artist chose what she thought would be the appropriate spacing for the
This right here was what the, what the landscape artist recommended or wanted to the, and they sent that to Mindot. So Mindot, like, those ones with the red X, those are the ones they had to take out because there's not room for them. So the placement wise, there's nothing with the beautification committee that did anything with placement, just because, like I said-
Right.
-all the utilities, all the streetlights and signs and all that stuff had to be put in first, and then they picked out where the locations would work, so.
Anyone else from the council chambers this evening want to speak? Anyone else in the beautification committee, business owners?
Well, I, I guess I, I want some clarification personally. Is this Mindot's final rendering as if the trees go downtown, this is where they go? Or they don't?
That's it?
That's in the final plans, this is the locations where they can, where they could make them work.
Well, I think we would have to for sure cross out that one that's an access or by- The access to that alley parking lot. If, if we were going to approve this, but.
Mr. Johnson?
Uh, my name is Andrew. I am strongly for trees. I don't think I've hid that from anybody. You know, another thing that needs to, to be brought up is that when, when traffic goes through tree areas, it actually slows down, and that's, that is what Mindot presented to us as well, so that's something important to keep in, in consideration for downtown, I think. So, um, you know, there's a lot of towns that do these projects, there's not many of them that don't put trees there. You know, Fergus tore up their entire downtown and they replanted trees, so, um, if it's a signage thing, I don't know why more signs aren't facing north and south rather than east and west in my own mind, but, um, you know, I, I tend to stop at towns that look a little more inviting and welcoming, and, uh, I think trees do that, so, that's my statement.
Anyone else? Counsel?
So if we approve this, and now we want to start, say, removing trees, for example, the one that would be by that, excuse me, by that entrance to the alleyway. If we, I mean, if we approve this, is that it? Or do we have conversations?
If we're going through the phases and you, and we see one that needs to be removed, it can be removed out of it.
It, it can be a change order, right? Okay, um, there's, what, there's 11 trees?
Between the roundabouts, there's 11 and the-
Yeah, and I think the comment was made that the, could compromise on a lower number? What would be that number? And would they be strategically placed to look good, or would they all be in one location and none in the rest of the location?
Well, I mean, from Matt's, um, survey, you know, there are seven trees north of the bridge. And if eight of the property owners or eight of the business owners aren't, aren't in favor of that, I mean, I'm not great at math, but that doesn't really add up a lot.
To clarify, there are eight private, or to be placed on private property, this is Matt Strand speaking, um, north of the bridge, the ninth is on city property.
There is no private property on, I mean, this is all Mindot right away, so, I mean, it's not considered private property, so.
I'm trying to differentiate between city property in front of Historic City Hall and private businesses, so, I mean, the businesses do own to the center of the road, it is private property with an easement. Correct?
It's all Mindot right away. It's all Mindot right away.
It's right away, but we still own it, we get assessed on it, it is our property, just there's a right, Mindot has a right of way on it. It's not publicly owned.
Yeah, money for them to use it.
Mindot was right, or rented easements from us.
Yeah, we have money for them.
Right, so that's, that's off the right of way, that's what they were, that's the temporary construction.
And we're getting assessed for the concrete in front of our building, so that's got to be our property, right?
No, no.
Well, if, yeah, if that was the case, then I would say you'd be paying for absolutely everything that's going on. Mindot is paying for a lot of it.
So it's Mindot right of way, not Mindot property?
That's what Mindot right of way is, is Mindot.
Okay.
That's what I understand.
Well, so nonetheless, there's eight in front of private businesses, one in front of Historic City Hall. All the ones on the west side of the road do not want them. Well, excuse me, not to speak for Rehab and Fitness, but I'll let you speak for them. And then, on the east side, didn't talk to one, two are kind of wishy-washy, and the third definitely does not want it, of where the trees are currently placed.
So what, what number then want them?
Um, of where the current tree placements are, I have not talked to any of the property owners that want that tree.
Matt, clarification, isn't one of those business owners, though, doesn't have an open walk-in business?
Right, but it's not in front of his property.
Roger?
He, you're, he was one you said didn't want to-
Roger does not want trees, but there's not a tree currently placed in front of Roger's business.
Yeah, just a clarification.
So, of the current eight placement, three are definite no's, one, or two do not want them blocking sign. No, four are definite no's, two don't want them blocking signs, and I didn't speak to one, and one was indifferent. None four.
I'm sorry, I just, one more thing. So the, first of all, those people that are saying, I do not want one, um, they should be here. I don't think you can go by, this person said 13 do, and this person said 7 do. And the other thing is, the people that own those businesses today may not own them forever. If, um, it's about the city and drawing people to the city, and perhaps you might get more business in that building because somebody happens to be standing under that tree, because it's a nice, cool spot to wait for someone, and, oh, I'm going to run into the hardware store and grab this while I'm here. So just, I, I think that you, I don't think you should take, somebody saying, this many people say yes and this many people say no, unless you have it written down with their signatures, um, that's what you have to go by.
All right, I have an email from Kathleen Hoover today saying she does not want trees. Can I present that? And again, contrary to what she just said, if we thought trees would help us, we wouldn't be fighting them. They're going to block our signage. Amanda Tweetin would be here, she's opposed to the tree in front of her building, she's doing a haircut right now, she can't be here. You guys are welcome to ask her on your own, so.
Counsel?
I want everybody to be happy, and it's not working out.
That won't happen.
Let me put another option, I mean, if you're debating both ways, we could reduce this down to have four on each side, I think, pretty easy. If you look on the west side, there's one, two, three, four, that one get removed, on the east side, one, two, you know, and then take out two of these, three, four, or whatever. Now, reduce it down to only eight trees in between.
That still leaves the trees in front of my buildings.
I'm just putting things out there, I don't-
I'll take all 11.
Okay.
I'll make Matt happy and Judy happy, and then we're, and then we can go. You know, it's, people need to go to other towns in the-
Okay, we, okay, we got to address the microphone, we can't talk from the audience.
You know, the beauty in these trees is the density, you know, and the numbers of trees. You know, Battle Lake made a big mistake in my mind, they have three trees through there, you know, so, the beauty is in the density, so that's one thing I'll add.
Okay, any more comments from the audience before we bring it back to the council? This is your opportunity. Anyone?
Um, my name is Mackenzie Thornton, I'm not on any councils or anything, but just as a young person who enjoys exploring and going downtown, trees are beautiful, they help bring in people. I know when I'm walking from business to business and the trees are beautiful, they're blocking the sun, you can still see signs, they're far out enough from the road where you can see signs, you can see businesses, it's very inviting and it's very beautiful. So, that's what I have to say.
Thank you. Anyone else? Okay, counsel, we have to, should make a decision here. We've been talking about this for a month and a half.
When is the deadline we have to make a decision by? I mean, does it warrant further conversations with further, more people?
Lance, you know the deadline?
To what end?
Well, to what end, just to hear the people. Whether it be on our own, on our own trips downtown, or-
Well, if, you know, if somebody has an opinion, they should be here.
These trees would not get planted until 25.
Yeah, 2025.
So what does that mean?
It's not like today.
No, I mean, seriously, I don't understand. I mean, so does that mean, you're saying approve it and then, and then ax it later? Or, I mean, well, that's what I'm trying to say is, I mean-
No, I'm saying if, if you wanted to talk to the downtown people yourselves, you've got an opportunity.
I mean, they could be putting in a couple grates here in the next few weeks, the two that you tentatively approved.
Well, yeah, the two on this south side of the river.
So you could put in a grate and take it out later, right?
Yeah.
Or cement.
Well, the other pink elephant in the room is the conduit then that we're talking about, are we going to have that bored in? Or do we kick that again down the, down the road?
That, that, that doesn't need to be decided today. That, that work won't be done for quite a while yet, that's all north of the bridge, so-
Okay.
The big question is whether you want trees or not, and then we can figure out conduit.
Counsel? Well, having gone around to some of these different towns where they've done landscaping projects and things like that, I think we should take the recommendation of what our committee did, and I'm not going to argue the number of trees or the location, but I think we should put some trees downtown and follow the recommendation of what a committee, our committee did here, so. That's, I'll make that a motion that we follow that recommendation and put some trees downtown. Is there a second? Is there a second? I'll second that then. No discussion? Now we can talk about it.
Do we have to decide tonight?
That's, that's what we said two months ago. I can tell you, I have talked to people downtown, I've talked to people in businesses, and in fact, I asked one person, and two people that were eavesdropping jumped in on this conversation at the same time, and they were all. Of the people I've talked to, I've had one person that were in favor of trees downtown, and he called me today, and he is also in the audience. And I used to say I never got phone calls on topics, I've gotten phone calls on this topic.
I haven't heard from anybody. I guess one, one.
You have to go out more.
And I would offer, just from the general community standpoint, like, if you're on the ground- And I would offer, just from the general community standpoint, like, if you're on the ground, that the overwhelming consensus of what I have heard is that people, the neighborhoods, the people of Pelican want trees. They, they, they think that it looks bare now, and that without, that they're more concerned about the greater good and the longevity of that decision, and less concerned about the individual who may or may not want something.
And I will agree with you that, I mean, we caught, we heard, we heard a lot about when they cut down the trees by the high school, when they cut down the trees up here by, um, Genial. We heard about that, but we, you know, there was never trees downtown, so, you know, it's a, they don't, they don't know what they don't know as far as trees in our downtown. So, I agree that people were upset, you know, people like trees, I like trees.
Okay, any more discussion up here?
Yeah. The, and the argument that you're saying that the, you know, a person being in this business now might not be there fifty years from now, and the next person might want trees, the flip side to that argument is, the person in that business now that wants a tree in front of their business might not be there in fifty years, and the next guy is a New Yorker and doesn't want a tree in front of his business. So, I mean, we, you know, if you're gonna, if you're gonna throw an argument one way, you have to look at the other side of the dulse up because it comes both ways. So there, I'm done.
Any more discussion?
Before we go to vote. What are we voting on?
That's what, yeah, I don't know.
Recommendation of the, of the...
Of beautification committee.
To have trees downtown.
But, so, as this plan states it, because you did mention in your motion, you didn't wanna vote on a number of trees.
Yeah, I don't wanna, just, we're gonna follow that recommendation and work it out, but...
So putting two trees downtown, we follow their recommendation? I, I would call for a roll call vote, just to get done with it.
Okay, Strand.
Not ready.
Putting you on the spot.
Nay.
Ballard.
Nay.
Mark Raff.
Nay.
Foster.
Aye.
And Fraser.
Aye. Okay, motion failed, now what?
Didn't talk about that part.
So where do we move on from here?
So, they're not putting these in till the twenty-fifth. The twenty-five. Twenty-twenty-five. Yeah, I, I guess I don't, I don't know where we go from here. And I don't know why I'm giving the ideas, but I guess we would have to talk, you've already talked to the north of, I mean, I get more community input, and...
We need those people here at the council chambers.
Well, we'll have to put something out.
Well, they know what's happening.
I know, but...
If they're interested, they should be here.
They need to be heard if they wanna be heard.
I agree.
And there has to be a deadline on a, on a date we set.
And we can't do he said, she said.
No.
No, correct.
Because the same people that talked to you talked to Matt, and you got different answers. So I, yeah, and I don't know what that looks like as far as...
So it puts us on the agenda next month again? For next meeting?
Say, it has to be decided by the next meeting.
That's a drop date.
Like I said, they're putting in grates here in the next couple weeks, so they, they need to know.
We'll have to, we'll have to do public notifications, just like we do on a open meeting.
So...
Put it in the press, hard.
Grates that were approved last meeting are override, or the vote tonight overrides that, so as of now, if they're pouring, in the next two weeks, if they're pouring sidewalk in this area, they will not be putting...
I would, I would go forward with the grates, 'cause you can pop them grates, it'll be some expense, but at least if this goes the other way, the grates will be there.
You're talking the grates on the...
The two.
The two.
On the south side.
Side of the bridge.
The two that may happen.
North side of the south.
I agree.
It, it's...
Okay, so that, nothing has changed as far as telling the contractor anything different as of now, but in the next, in two weeks, we need to know, 'cause...
Yeah, I don't, I mean, I don't mind sharing my opinion. I am a tree lover, but I don't, I don't feel like we have enough information from our public, and that's what, who we're here to represent.
Um, Matt Strand again. So, between the members, the, or the community members the council has spoken to, the letter from Kathleen Hoover, and myself, you already have half of the trees with a no.
Right, but that's, that's a far cry short of everybody involved. It does, I understand that it, that cost and maintenance falls to you, but there's a lot of other voices.
Maintenance is all cities.
The cost is all cities.
It'll cost the property owner zero dollars, that's the one thing.
I bet we'll clean leaves.
Okay, so we'll have it on the, we'll have it on the agenda for the next meeting.
So we have until the next meeting, we can decide at the next meeting?
Well, yeah, but let's, we need a plan to get the public input, then. If the public input has not been...
They need to be here.
Heavy press, our Facebook page, flyers hung where we announce meetings, let it be known, and if they don't notice all of the effort requesting their presence, then they don't have a dog in the fight.
Well, so, the people who are here tonight, if they can spread the word on, to people who have a dog in the fight, can they call council members, can they call City Hall, what do you want them to do?
They should call just one location. I'd say, Lance, you should be the contact person. 'Cause we're not at City Hall.
I've already gone out and contacted a lot, and that's where I presented, so I don't, and some of them were a little different than what Matt collected, so that's not the best, that's not the best way to do it either.
Those that have a true opinion should be here.
Should be here in person.
And we'll go through all this again next, next month.
But isn't that gonna be true of people in the community, they're welcome to come and give input to?
That's what I'm requesting, to please come and give us your opinion.
Not just the people downtown who want to be...
No, no.
Correct, very good, just a clarification.
Okay, anything else?
We're here for the entire public, not just the downtown district.
Okay, let's move on. Thank you all, one and all, for coming. Item number eight is EDA update. I have Jordan Grossman, EDA director, there's two different bullet points, we're looking for two different motions. The first one is Historic City Hall, best is floor tile, and the second bullet point is Brew Haven lease, which was in your package. Jordan?
Good evening, council members, we can talk about coffee, so, I think we all like that. I thought we would start with an update just on demo, reno of Historic City Hall. Things are going very well, the maintenance department did a great job getting all of the larger items cleared out, and Lance did a really good job setting things up in here for public to view. I attempted, and it didn't work out, so... While working on Historic City Hall, carpet was pulled up and some asbestos tile was found, so, something that you should be aware of. There is a way that, I mean, you can proceed in two different directions, whether you want to abate that or cover it. I have Teresa, our hopefully soon-to-be leaseholder here, to explain her thought process, so you don't just hear from me, you can hear from her directly, but the, the goal would be to put some cover on the floor. Brian, could you speak on that?
Yeah, it's just a floor leveler.
Thank you, a floor leveler, to...
So they don't need to abate it if they put the leveler?
If it's not disturbed, it doesn't need abatement, generally.
It's only in the tile, it's not in the glue or the mastic, so, as long as they don't...
Disturb it.
Disturb the tile, it'll be fine. It's been there for a hundred years.
And that's okay, to do it that way?
As Brian explained, the floor leveler, I'm all for it. It cuts down time, and I'm assuming cost.
A great cost.
If, if you do that, just make sure that we're, are telling the contractors that it's there, so when, if they're drilling through or something, then they just have to use those wet methods, just to make sure there's no asbestos. The only time asbestos is dangerous, if it's in the air and it gets breathed in, so...
Okay.
But most contractors are pretty aware of...
Yes, and Teresa's our general, our general...
I'm doing it.
I am the general contractor. She's the general contractor. I'm sorry, I'm Teresa Thornton. So, with regards to that, the electrician and the plumber will both be going through, so I would need to know procedures for them, or...
Most contractors should know how to deal with it, if they're drilling through anything, it just, it's a matter of just keeping things wet, so things don't, the asbestos die, doesn't actually get in the air, is all.
Okay.
So...
Okay. And then we can keep trucking along down there, she's doing a great job moving things forward, so...
So you're looking for a motion to approve the floor leveler, correct?
Uh, alter, um, and that would be a building improvement, so when we talked about that money set aside for the building, anything in relation to the floor would be approved as far as the city dollar investment in the building.
So does that, 'cause you needed a certain kind of flooring for the, was it food grade or some kind of, I mean, is, is that included in this, or is it all the same stuff? Did that question make sense?
Floor leveler going down underneath of any topping.
Right, but I mean, the, the stuff that you're putting down on top of it, you're talking, you said, planking or... Whatever, whatever goes down, I mean, is it all gonna be that food grade, or is that just where your coffee thing was?
We're looking at food grade in the area where the barista bar will be. I also, we are both looking into what type of covering she could put on top of that, that would already be food grade without having to install another layer of flooring, something like epoxy, yeah.
The food grade thing, but...
The epoxy flooring.
The epoxy flooring, if it, if it is food grade, I can do it over everything.
Okay, got you, that's what it is, that was my...
Ready to make a motion?
Yeah, I'll move that we go forward with the leveling and new flooring for Historic City Hall.
Is there a second?
Second.
Motion second, discussion. Discussion. Hearing none, all in favor, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Falls the same, motion carried. Uh, Brew Haven lease, who wants to speak to that?
The lease was put in your packets, hopefully you viewed it before our meeting, we've come up with a lease. As far as tenant and landlord relationship over the course of a five-year agreement, this is year one, nothing would really change besides terms year over year, but I think it will all be pretty straightforward. So if you had any questions on the lease agreement, we could talk about it.
I do have a question, and it, for the, I mean, the amount of rent, don't we want that included in there so that she has an idea of what going down the road? I mean, yeah, the first year is free, but then if we negotiate year two and it's fourteen thousand dollars, and she says, "No, I'm out," it would be fourteen thousand dollars, but I mean...
Which is what I've tried to assure, is that it wouldn't be fourteen thousand dollars.
But it's, it just, in the lease, it just says it's negotiable from year to year, but shouldn't there be a starting point?
We kinda did talk about that, and we went back and forth because with the construction, everything going on, it's gonna be hard to know, so if I put a cap on it... We're just hoping that we can negotiate fairly.
You're comfortable without it.
It's a little scary, but I'm trusting you all.
Well, yeah, I mean, are we comfortable without it? I mean, what's the point, I mean, there's not a...
Yeah, I think it's a kind of a mute point for at least two years of this lease, until we get regular flow back through town.
So then we should give her the first two years free.
Okay.
No, because half of downtown will be open next year.
So that's the thought process behind not including it, was we can't really even look at her numbers when she is open. Hopefully, late summer, early this fall, this all depends on state agencies with licensing. You know, she's not gonna even have a full year after the lease is signed to look at her profits and loss and try to come up with something that's feasible for her and sustainable for the city. So, leaving it blank allows us the opportunity to look at those things, and then come back to you with a number that is fair to the tenant and a number that you can agree on as a landlord.
So we will be at liberty at some point within the five-year term, initial term, to visit this.
Absolutely, every year, every year, yeah.
Yeah, the lease does, from years two, three, five, we're negotiating.
Yeah, yeah, I know.
Any other questions?
I guess you'll have to trust us, too, in most cases.
He's fixing to ask a question.
For a free cup of coffee, I mean, might be able to...
Strike that.
Does this include the upstairs?
The upstairs is officially vacated, so the upstairs is available for storage. It's not a public, it's not accessible to the public the way it stands right now.
For Teresa.
Yes.
Right.
Right, so we can't have customers up there.
Do you know if, like, insulation or anything like that is asbestos, like, the wall stuff?
I don't think so, they, when they redid it into the tourist center or whatever, I believe that a lot of that was taken out except for the flooring.
For the same reason, I think I remember, is if it's undisturbed, it doesn't have to be replaced.
Okay, we're looking for a motion to accept the lease agreement. Is there a second? I'll second it. Motion second, discussion, discussion, discussion. Hearing none, all in favor, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Falls the same, motion carried. Thank you, Teresa, thank you, Jordan.
Thank you, have a good night.
Let's jump down to item number twelve, police hiring process for police department. We have Chief Todd Quatens here with us this evening, and talking about a signing bonus. There was a handout on your desk when you arrived this evening. Chief, you wanna take it away?
Absolutely, thanks for having me. You do have a handout, I, um, on the, on the topic of sign, of the hiring incentive program, or signing bonus, however we wanna refer to it, as you're aware, um, we've been short-staffed for a considerable amount of time. Law enforcement in general is short-staffed across, across the state and country, trying to come up with ways to make people want to come here. And, uh, an idea that we came up with, that you're seeing more and more, is the concept of hiring incentives or sign-on bonuses. This is a little bit of a tweak on that concept. A lot of places you're seeing a, a sign-on bonus in that five to ten thousand dollar range. But a lot of times, it is a true sign-on bonus. Once you're off probation, they, they give the money out, and you could leave months later, and, and there is no retention piece of it. What this dollar amount would do, as it explains in the handout, is there would be the, the first amount that would be given out after a successful completion of the probationary period, which generally is six months. Then after that, after three years of service, basically it becomes a retention bonus. It's, it's all, it's all part of the, the sign-on bonus concept, but after three years of service, the other piece is, is paid out. The, the positive is, um, if by chance this were to bring somebody in this year, we are well short on, on our wages this year because there is anticipated that we would be at, at full staff, we're still not. So, the first, the, the six-month probationary period, that chunk would come out of this year's budget. If that hire doesn't happen sometime soon, we would be able to budget for that, that six-month amount in next year's budget. The piece that we pay out after three years of service, obviously, we can plan for that, we can budget for that. We, we know, we know that's coming, and if, if that employee happens to leave before three years of service, there, it'll be clear, they, they walk away with none of that money, other than that first amount that they got after six months. that they got after six months of service. If the tool works, if it gets us to get people here, the ideal would be to bring somebody in on a lateral, right? Somebody that we wouldn't have to even have the full three-month FTO process. You could scale it back, hopefully, hopefully taking off six to eight weeks of that, so take it down, hopefully down to four weeks to six weeks. And so then, you are saving the monies of not having that person right around with an FTO. They're actually out on their own shift, they're, you know, we're not paying two officers for the same time. So there is some, there's some monies to be saved if we get a lateral, and the retention piece, just obviously with the way law enforcement is right now, the turnover of somebody leaving after nine months or 12 months, this would discourage that, so. It's an idea, throwing out an idea, I guess, just seeing if the council's interested. If not, we'll keep on thinking of ideas.
Council have questions for Chief?
I understand this is an idea that your team came up with?
Yep. And they all know that it would not impact them. Other than, it would impact them in the fact that it's, it would bring us closer to full staff.
Yeah.
You know, they wouldn't, we wouldn't be short, and we wouldn't have that going on, so it impacts them that way.
And this isn't new. This is, this has been applied in many places. This is a little, like you said, some caveats to it in comparison. I mean, private businesses are struggling the same as, you know, anybody, ambulances, police, anybody. So the hiring bonuses with this caveat is highly interesting to me, because I think it, any little small thing that you can offer over and above what most are doing, especially in the area, I don't know, does the county use any kind of hiring bonus yet?
The county does not right now.
I don't think Fergus Falls does.
No, we would be the only one locally that's, in Otter Tail County that's doing it, which might be that little bit to get people.
That's exactly what I'm thinking. You dangle a carrot, and it's, you know, it's not a life-changing amount of money, but it also says, three years, I can put a nice down payment on what I wanted to, you know, or whatever. I like the idea if the city can figure the budget, you know.
Do you have any questions with that, Lance?
Well, that's the good part about this. I mean, the only thing that would be a little bit unexpected is if we do hire somebody, then that first six months, we'd have 2,500 that we'd have to, but that's very doable. And that 12-5 is stretched out until there are three years, so we have that heads-up to know, to budget that in that year that.
And either here. I do agree that the 25 is important, because I think you have a higher likelihood of enticing a lateral employee, somebody coming in with experience. You're going to get a lot of regular, new people, but if you have a, let's all hope we can end up having to make choices, right?
Right.
For new officers, right?
How many do you need for full staff?
This, this year's budget, we would be at one. You reduced that number by one officer for this year's budget, is my understanding correct? So for this year's budget, if we added one officer, we would be at full staff. Talk about next year.
Next year.
Next year.
We're still short one.
We're still short one, we are still short one.
No matter what.
Yes.
Two technically.
Right.
I move to approve this plan.
I'll second that.
Motion second, discussion, discussion.
So the current officers wouldn't feel like it's not really fair to them?
Well, they've all joked about the fact that, you know, maybe they need to resign and then get rehired back, but they also understand, I've shown them the language in our, in the letter of agreement that we would have with them, that it's for new hires. So they understand, and, you know, they also, they understand the agreement that I'm suggesting, and they understand that that, we'll work on making sure they stay happy. They've been going to trainings, we're doing things to try and keep people happy. We'll deal with that.
The bonus to them comes as, they don't have to cover the shift of the officers they don't have. They give more family time and more time off.
Well, we've struggled with this for years of trying to retain people, and here's an idea to do something about it, so I think we ought to approve this.
Any more discussion? Hearing none, all in favor, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Foes the same, motion carried. Thank you, Chief.
Thank you.
Item number nine, resolution number 2024-08, resolution accepting monetary limits on municipal tort liability, which is in your packet. Danielle, you're going to speak for that.
Yeah, this is a resolution that we pass every year when I have to do the insurance liability coverage. Generally, in the past, we have always, what do we do? We do not waive the limits. If we, that, if we do not waive the limits, it stays at, this is where I get confused, then a claimant could recover no more than $500,000. If we do waive the limits, then we, then it would be $2 million for a single occurrence. So we do not waive the limit, or in the past, we have not waived the limits. So I've written up the resolution like we normally do, so if you want to continue to do not waive the limit, the statutory limits, then approve the resolution as written. You get all that?
You see no problem in this, being as you brought this forward? Why isn't this included in, like, the beginning of the year, January stuff?
We renew 7-1, our insurance renewals. So that's, it's coming up now is when I'm dealing with it, so.
I move to approve resolution number 2024-08.
My second.
Motion second, discussion, discussion, discussion. Hearing none, all in favor, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Foes the same, motion carried. Item number 10, city hall personnel, Danielle. One she does not want to talk about.
Yeah. I unfortunately had my utility billing clerk put in her notice. Her last day will be June 6th. So I need to replace her. So I have, I got it in the press for this week, and I will be putting it on Facebook and online, so spread the word. I'm looking for a new utility billing clerk, so.
This is just an FYI?
Yeah, yeah, just to let you know.
Is there any reason that it's always that position?
Um, no.
Is it a bad, bad job?
No, I, this time.
Is it the chair, or what?
Yeah, do they want a new chair?
This time, it was, she, she was coming from over by Rush Lake, so it was a long drive, and that was basically what it was for her, because she spent so much time in the car. And she, the city she's going with now, full-time for them is 32 hours, and we don't, you know, so that's, that's a whole day different for us.
What is our full-time hire?
Forty, yep, yep. And, you know, I talked money with her, and she's taking a pay cut, and so, so it, you know, I just, I tried, I tried to bargain with her, but.
I was just curious, because it keeps coming up.
Yeah, yep, and the, yeah, I know, I know, and that's been a revolving door the last few years, so that's unfortunate, but.
Okay, thank you, Danielle.
Yeah.
Item number 11, Pelican Rapids Aquatic Center change request, which was in the packet. That's change request number nine, Hammers Construction, for $514.70. And also, the bullet point we added this evening, a pay request, and Lance will speak to both of those.
Right, so the change request that was for the, so you approved the cameras, security cameras, the three cameras for the pool area, and this is just to change the, the electrical contractor will run some conduit so we can run the wire to those cameras, so that's what this change request is about. Any questions on that?
Is there a motion to accept the change?
Do they have to be separate? Do they have to be separate?
Can you do it separate? Yes.
Yeah, yeah.
I'll move we accept that change request number nine.
I'll move that we.
Second.
Oh, second.
Looking for a second.
I'm trying to move.
Was that a second? Okay, motion second, discussion, discussion, discussion. Hearing none, all in favor, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Foes the same, motion carried. Pay request.
No, I'll make a motion. Order the pay request, or pay the pay requests.
Is there a second?
Second.
Motion second, discussion, discussion, discussion. Hearing none, all in favor, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Foes the same, motion carried. Item number 15, administrator report, Lance.
Since the last meeting, worked with the clerk to mayor, set the agenda and prepped for the council meeting, attended a department head meeting, attended the Highway 1059-108 construction meetings and open houses, worked with the PFA on the funding for the water and sewer portion of the 59-108 project, set up asbestos testing with Lakes Country Service Cooperative for the floor tile at historic City Hall, and requested abatement estimates, met with senior loss control consultant Mark Dunker from the League of Minnesota Cities, was the annual check-in with him, with the focus on employee wellness programs, attended a pool committee meeting, and then sought opinions from downtown business owners and landowners about the trees in the downtown area. Any questions?
I'm still thinking about the billing clerk position. I mean, do you have any ideas on that? I mean, I don't get it.
Hiring bonus.
Retention incentive. I mean, I don't get it.
I don't know what the deal is. We're optimistic we'll get a good one this time, and it'll be a long-term one.
Can it be a work-from-home position?
Okay, any questions, Lance, on his report? Thank you.
Thank you.
Item 16, mayor report, just a few items. May 15th, May 22nd, attended complete street project staff meetings and also complete street public meetings at the library. We've had from, only where's from 10 to four people from the public there in attendance. Meetings are, continue each Wednesday at the library from noon till 12:30 PM. Also, attended a meeting with West Central Initiative regarding e-bikes, some ideas they have for communities within Otter Tail County, and there's more be coming on that in the future. Attended a congratulatory award to Gemma Janizowski at the Pelican Rapids Viking Elementary School. She won the Minnesota Rural Water poster contest, or her winning photo was on the Minnesota Rural Water magazine, and she got a $100 gift certificate for Minnesota Rural Water, as did the city of Pelican Rapids, correct? Okay. Is that the bonus? And then gave the welcome speech yesterday at the Memorial Day Service, Attorney Lutheran Church, and then today, Administrator Royson and I set the agenda for this afternoon's city council meeting. Any questions? Seeing no other business, or motion to adjourn?
Can I have a comment? My name's Justin Fury, and I just want to make a comment about the committee, because I don't know the communication about the beautification committee. So I don't know if you guys know that Bob Schliemann was on the committee, Bob Olson, Deb Shustrom, Harold Holt, Jackie Porto, Judy Eagleson, Judy Tabit, well, Judy Tabit, myself, Mike Harson, Patrick Holster, and Zina Stussy were on the committee. So I just want to communicate that there were people with, you know, they were stakeholders. I know that a lot of business people, you know, I'm on the chamber board, I know a lot of businesses knew about it, business owners knew about it, Matt knew about it. Matt talked to me numerous times about it, and I said, hey, come to the, come to the meetings. He said, oh, yeah, well, you know, I can't do that. Well, come to the meeting, you know, at least come once or something, make it, make it a priority. But that wasn't done, and so, you know, as you guys are asking people to commit time, you know, we had five meetings that were probably an hour and a half to two hours long each. And so when, when you guys are asking for community members to be a part of something, and then just kind of, you know, one person comes in and kind of destroys the whole thing, you know, it doesn't encourage people to be a part.
Okay, thank you, Justin. Thanks for that information, members. Motion to adjourn, second. Motion second, all in favor, signify by saying aye. Foes the same, meeting adjourned.
I'm.
I didn't look at that computer.
Anyone paying attention, isn't that terrible?
That's the same question I asked, Danielle. That position is always on safety.
Wow, that must be brutal.